Suffolk City School Board will now come to order. We will have the pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Bishaw.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Bishaw. We'll now have the certification of the closed meeting by the attorney.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of September 20th, 2018 pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So moved. If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Now have seven members who have signed up for to be speakers on two topics. One for capital improvement plan and the other six for playground proposal. This is clerk, will you give the...
Yes, at this time, this is an opportunity for the public to provide comments on related topics that are listed on the agenda for this meeting. Before you begin your comments, you must provide your name and your residence address. Your comments may not identify any specific person in a personal attack or derogatory manner. You will be allotted five minutes to make your comments. You are not allowed to share your comments, share part of your time with any other speaker, even if you elect not to use all of your time. I will provide you with a 30-second warning so that you can close out your remarks. If you're unable to complete all of your comments within the five-minute time limit, you're more than welcome to provide those in writing to us at a later time and I will distribute them to the board members.
Thank you. The first person is Ms. Patricia Holloman.
Good evening, Chairman Copeland, Vice Chair Byram, School Board Members and Superintendent Whitney. My name is Tricia Holloman and I reside at 6226 Cambridge Drive in the Burbidge Grant subdivision. I'm here tonight to speak to you regarding the Inclusive Play Project. As a longtime resident in Northern Suffolk, a volunteer within Suffolk Public Schools, and the president of the recently reestablished Suffolk PTA Council, I was very excited to get involved in such a meaningful and needed project. I have been involved in this project since its inception and been highly active in every phase of its development. I can tell you that our project lead, Meg Diggs, has taken the greatest care in ensuring that we have consulted and worked with the best of experts in the field of inclusive play and playgrounds. One of the main components that enticed me to get involved with this project was the many, many studies that discussed the staggering numbers of children who are victims of bullying, especially those that live with some type of disability, and how all of that seems to begin in early education. I quickly became fascinated, though, when I read countless studies that discussed the importance of cooperative play and common goal activities that focused on working together for a common purpose and harnessing the different abilities of each student. One of the main commonalities in all of these studies was the importance and the significance of the playground when teaching children about empathy and teamwork in a fun, social environment. The goal when designing this playground was not only to create a place that would accommodate people with every range of abilities, but to create a playground that would set a new standard for playgrounds within public schools and bring Suffolk to the forefront of public school innovation. Inclusive playgrounds are few and far between throughout the country and finding them in public schools is, they're virtually nonexistent. In my humble opinion, though, public schools is where they are needed the most. Schools are oftentimes at the heart of our communities and for the students, the playground is the heart of the school. The place where children learn such wonderful lessons about fairness, about sharing, and about taking turns. Yet, we have playgrounds that are unfair to children who cannot access them, cannot be shared by all the students, and they prevent people from ever conceiving of taking a turn. What we have worked to design is a playground that will remove barriers, encourage cooperative play, thrill those that are seeking a little more challenge, engage those that need a little more stimulation, and be a favorite for everyone. We have created an opportunity to have an alternative classroom, interactive education, and even cooperative learning. For those of us involved in this project, it is about so much more than just a playground. PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Every child, one voice. This is a prime opportunity to see PTA's mission come to life and to be that voice for every child. So what are we asking for? Simply this: We're asking for you to vote yes to allow us to build and gift you a new, state-of-the-art, inclusive playground that would bring Suffolk Public Schools forward as a true example of modern thought and innovation. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Michelle Sowerby. Am I correct?
Hi, my name is Michelle Sowerby. I live at 109 Northbrook Avenue here in Suffolk, and I am a library media specialist at Northern Shores Elementary. I've been with Suffolk for 34 years, and yes, I did start teaching when I was two. Without kidding aside, you can see that I am a disabled person. I do not like to use the word disabled. I like to say we are all abled, but some of us just have to do things differently. When I was a child, I had a hard time doing what was considered the norm by society. I walked and ran differently and had a very hard time with fine motor skills. When I was in elementary school, there was no Disability Act or any provisions for a child who had anything wrong with them. As a young child, it hurt to be left behind, and I could, I literally would come home and practice what the other kids were doing. My only advocates were my mom and my dad, who made sure that I was included and accepted in everything. It has been only within the last 15 years that my muscular dystrophy has progressed and I have become more reliant on walk, with walking aids and motorized carts. Now let us think to 2018, where we have a wonderful opportunity to build an all-inclusive and all-abilities playground in the Northern Shores, where no child would ever feel excluded. This playground would be a shining possibility for Suffolk where the abled and the differently abled could play together. And yes, even I would like to have the chance to be able to be transported back to a time where I could have a chance to participate in playground activities without constraints. Think very seriously about not letting this golden opportunity slip through your hands. As you can see from my childhood experience with difficulties, I can attest to the need for this all-inclusive playground. Just think of the blessing that you can provide to all children.
Sowerby. Next, we have Ms. Meg Diggs, who will speak on capital improvement plan. Ms. Diggs?
Good evening, Chairman Copeland, Vice Chair Byram, School Board Members and Superintendent Whitney. My name is Meg Diggs and I reside at 5214 Regatta Point Road. As you know, I'm passionate about the Inclusive Play Project and look forward to hearing the superintendent's update on the playground proposal. But I'm here today to speak to you in a different capacity. I'm here today as a representative of Northern Shores PTA to speak on behalf of the students' family and community members of Northern Shores about the capital improvement plan on the agenda. The CIP from last year included a 10-classroom addition to Northern Shores. I'm happy to see that in the newly proposed CIP, you have recommended moving up the timeline by one year and increasing the additional, addition to 12 classrooms. I want to thank you for recommending both an accelerated timeline and additional classrooms. I truly appreciate your efforts to meet the needs at Northern Shores. As you may know, Northern Shores currently has 13 mobile units. But the overcrowding of Northern Shores is not only shown in the number of mobile units, but also inside the building where every available space is being utilized as a classroom. We have several small classes that are making do in rooms that were never designed to be classrooms. These rooms were designed for one-on-one or small group purposes such as speech, occupational, or physical therapy offices. Now these small cramped, windowless rooms are full-time classrooms packing in 15 to 16 students and a teacher. We have ESL teachers working with students in a shared office space, which is actually a textbook and equipment storage area in the media center. The PTA believes that the importance of parental engagement in a child's education cannot be overstated. As the president of the PTA and as a parent who has volunteered weekly in the school for the last five years, I can state with certainty that the lack of available general use space is a tremendous deterrent for parental involvement in the school. It is not for lack of parents being interested in volunteering or for teachers not requesting the assistance, but for the fact that there is not a single corner of that school that is available to work in. We have a pair of dedicated grandparents that you will often find sitting on the floor in a hallway, working with children because there is literally no other place for them to go. In July, the City Planning Commission made a recommendation to city council to deny housing in Harborview. In their recommendation, they cited school capacity as one of the primary reasons for denying this application, and even go on to say that Northern Shores, the elementary school that would be impacted, only has a current available capacity of 44 students. I knew that this was wrong, and I started to question exactly how overcapacity we actually were, and why doesn't the city believe that, or why does the city believe that we have available capacity? According to the architects, Northern Shores was built with a capacity of 730 students. In the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Suffolk, the level of service for elementary schools is 118 building square feet per student. Northern Shores, from what I could find, is a 70,000-square-foot facility, and using this level of service, Northern Shores has a capacity of 593 students. According to the Virginia Department of Education, the three-year average enrollment at Northern Shores is 887 students, meaning that if we use the city's UDO, Northern Shores would currently be at 150% capacity. And that's not taking into consideration the additional growth expected in Northern Shores. In the same recommendation from the City Planning Commission, it goes on to warn, "It is important to note that the northern growth area has 3,721 pipeline residential units. When considering committed and pipeline development, the potential impact on the school could be significant to the northern growth area at all levels." Using the city of Suffolk's student generation rate, it shows that this pipeline development is expected to bring an additional 874 elementary school students into our Northern Suffolk elementary schools. 874 additional elementary school students alone. While I understand that not all of these students will end up at Northern Shores, I'm very concerned that without adequate planning and even, that even a portion of the additional enrollment has the potential to cripple our already overcrowded and overstrained system. I do not believe in complaining about a problem, without at least bringing an idea to the table. In the spirit of trying to be part of the solution, I want to say that I would be interested in seeing if it's feasible to construct an adjunct building in the large, empty fields next to the existing building at Northern Shores. This adjunct building could potentially house fourth and fifth graders, alleviating the strain caused by overcrowding and creating an opportunity to meet the level of service required by the city for our growing community.
30 seconds.
The construction of the adjunct building would have the additional benefit of being able to build the necessary addition to Northern Shores without disrupting the existing school building, its students, or its instruction. I'm asking you to revisit the proposed addition to Northern Shores. Thank you very much.
Next, we will have Mrs. Fleming on playground proposal. Mrs. Fleming?
Good evening, I am Kaitlin Fleming. I reside at 5061 Bay Circle. Having an inclusive playground built in our community, at our school, Northern Shores, is an amazing opportunity. We are so fortunate that this project began this year. Having this playground built at Northern Shores would be, would be a visible symbol of what we as a community and school value: respect, inclusion, diversity, education, kindness, and love. This is a wonderful way we can demonstrate those values to Suffolk's youth. This playground would show them that we recognize their different strengths and abilities and that we embrace them, that our community, school, neighborhood, and peers respect those differences. No child should ever feel excluded. They should be afforded the opportunity to enjoy recess and playground time with their families and friends. Having this playground built at Northern Shores would be a wonderful addition to our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Eric Simborski.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak about this matter today. I'm here today on behalf of my community, my children's school, and of course, my children whom are very excited about the idea of an improved playground at Northern Shores. I've heard, as I'm sure most of the parents here have, story after story of the broken, limited, and dated condition of the present playground, not to mention the population of the school versus available equipment. I truly believe our kids deserve better from us, especially our special needs children, who deserve much more than the options they have, not only at Northern Shores or Suffolk, but the entire Hampton Roads area. In addition, I believe in the power of community to foster a family-friendly, safe, productive, and attractive environment. That's what brought me and my family to Suffolk in the first place. Having such a fantastic public space to meet, socialize, and even hold community events can only improve that environment. I love Suffolk, and I never plan on leaving it, and as such, I see it as my duty to try to improve where I see a need. So I know that you guys can see the vision of this project and the wonderful things it can do for our city. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Emil Reynolds.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Emil Reynolds. I live at 6400 Sandgate Drive North in Burbidge Grant. Tonight, I will be here talking to you about the Inclusive Play Project, and I'm a member of the Northern Shores PTA and a member of the Suffolk community, more specifically Burbidge Grant, as mentioned, and a parent of three children in the Suffolk Public Schools. I'm here to really just talk to you specifically about the Inclusive Play Project and placing it in my neighborhood and at my children's school, and how that would be a great thing for the neighborhood and the surrounding area. So when I was asked to do this, first, I reflected a little bit about my experiences. Most of my life, I spent in the Army in combat zones, watching other people in other countries in the Middle East, Asia, and Africa where inclusivity is not even a consideration, and children who were handicapped were literally and figuratively pushed aside in society generation after generation. And that's why I'm thankful that the team here has put together this proposal and even came up with the idea of having an inclusive playground in North Suffolk. My oldest is a senior now at Nanceman River, and he went through bullying, a lot of it, in elementary school. We moved here from Virginia Beach, so he was getting bullied down in Virginia Beach. He was getting bullied here all through elementary and middle school until finally he kind of came into his own and was also, because he was, he was suffering from pretty severe ADHD that was undiagnosed, so he couldn't really relate to others well and all the things that went along with that. And there wasn't any real, you know, normal structure that allowed him to kind of be himself. So for him and the other children, friends of ours, friends in the neighborhood, we've spoken about this project, and people in Burbidge Grant are excited about the possibility of having it there. So the importance of this initiative goes without saying. Inclusivity is paramount in our society, and excluding children from one of the most fundamental activities and joys of childhood at being playing on the playground, even inadvertently, is not excusable this day and age. There are only two inclusive playgrounds in all of Hampton Roads, both in Virginia Beach. So having one here puts us at the forefront, right here in North Suffolk, of innovation and our efforts at keeping our community together and keeping it growing. So in our growing community, we do have children that cannot use run-of-the-mill playground equipment, as you well know, as has been stated. In my neighborhood and the surrounding areas, we have many kids who need and would benefit from this project, and the beauty of it is, is that as you grow older, I know I've got injuries from my time in the Army, so it's hard for me to run around and run after my kids up and down the playground and everything else, and I'll tell you, I've got the most rambunctious little guys. I've got, I've got four kids in total, so, you know, having the ramps and all the things that go with this makes it a little bit easier for folks that need a little bit extra help. So a school is a beacon for learning, not just from books, but from each other. It's a fundamental way that children learn is through play. So this would be a meaningful and impactful effort with even greater impact in learning in young lives so that this message of togetherness and inclusivity rings true loud and long in every aspect of their young lives and as they grow older and they can pass this on, you know, to their kids, should they have them in the future. So in closing, in Burbidge Grant alone, there are over 4,000 households with children, according to Burbidge Grant's statistics, some of whom have special needs. As a resident there, I and my neighbors would welcome the opportunity to have this structure in our neighborhood and our kids' school, and in fact, have, again, have had conversations about this possibility with excitement and hope that this takes place. I would ask each of you to give consideration to the many, many members of the community who want this playground in our area and at Northern Shores. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Lastly, we have Ms. Kathleen Jackson.
Good evening. I am here to talk just for a couple minutes about my support for the playground project. My name is Kate Jackson. I'm the mother of four Suffolk Public School students. My oldest graduated from Kings Fork's IB program last year, and I have a sophomore in the IB program in Kings Fork, and I have a eighth grader and fourth grader at Northern Shores. I live at 5306 Marsh Landing Lane in Suffolk in the riverfront. We've been here since 2007, and when we first moved into Suffolk, people told us that we couldn't send our kids to the public schools, that we needed to live in Hickory or in Hampton or in Virginia Beach in certain parts of the, of the cities that had the best schools, and we have found Suffolk to be the hidden gem of Hampton Roads. Our oldest just graduated, and she got into William &amp; Mary and UVA, and really, we are sucking the marrow out of the public schools. I have noticed that Northern Shores is more, has more students than when our older kids were there, and Mr. Tice is the fifth grade teacher. He's in wheelchair. He can't even approach the playground at all. The kids are aware of this because there's no ramp. So I'm coming at this as, from the property tax angle. So when people, when we moved here, people said, "You need to live in Hickory or up where your kids can, can go to the schools where the NASA scientists' kids go." And they drive by Northern Shores and they see the playground. It's like the, the window dressing. It's the curb appeal. And so I would understand if you said, "We only have like so much money, we have to be good stewards with your tax dollars," but considering that this would be paid for out of private funds, to me, it just sort of seems like a win-win as we compete with these private schools that are getting built in Northern Suffolk. And my friends in my neighborhood are saying, "This is why we're spending $100,000 a year to send our four kids to Norfolk Collegiate." My answer is, you can get a great education from the public schools of Suffolk, and, and we all do better if our kids are going to school together in the community. So, you know, I'm just, we're very evangelical about the Suffolk Public Schools. They're wonderful at Northern Shores. We've, we have nothing but great experiences, and I hope that we can get this project done so that when people drive through and they think, "Can we, can we, you know, live in this community?" They see the, the kind of playground that their special snowflake kids, they can picture them playing on. So that's my angle is the, the tax, funding the taxpayer base. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. That concludes the number of public speakers. Now we will have any comments from any of the board members. This is basically informational, but at the same time, I'd like to know from the superintendent.
Actually, I do. The fourth item, playground proposal update, do you want to do it then, or would you like for me to just proceed?
Oh, you can proceed.
Okay. Well, I'll say this to you all, the, one of the reasons that we put it on the agenda is because we wanted to give you information and some input that, that I have received. I will preface my comments by saying I certainly support the idea of an all-inclusive playground. I think it's much needed, and I think there are definitely many advantages to having that. I think the advantages, quite naturally, is a matter of all means all, making certain that we have facilities that all students feel comfortable participating, and all students can participate, so making certain that we address that. I think that when we look at Northern Shores Playground, or we look at several of our playgrounds, unfortunately, many of them do need to be upgraded. I do think that there are some challenges, however, placing this at Northern Shores. One of the challenges that I see is the size of it. I do think that it would be an attraction, an attraction for folks that aren't enrolled in our schools, which may not be a bad thing, but it does bring its challenges. If it's large like that, it's a matter of making sure that we can maintain it. The other additional piece that I think is important is just not maintaining it, but upkeep as well. And finally, I'll say this, I have had conversation with our city manager, and while it's not been a formal discussion, and formally, he, he endorses or he can accept the idea as well, he has shared, he sees this something that he can, he might have an interest in actually having a joint ownership, if that's the direction. And when I say joint ownership, just as we have a joint use of facility, I should say, some of our gymnasiums where the city kind of takes over after school hours, they would take over maintenance, they take, take over the, the hours and just maintaining it in general. That, that certainly is attractive to me as far as if indeed we were to have it at Northern Shores. He has made the comment, he's not certain if that's the ideal place to have an all-inclusive playground. Perhaps he's considering other constituents in the city as well. But that's the information that I have right now. What I would need from the board is some direction as far as coming back to you with perhaps alternatives, proposal, and recommendation.
May I speak, just because it's my area and those are my neighbors and constituents? If you can get us the information that you shared with regard to maintaining, updating it, that kind of thing, I think it's wonderful that people are willing to work, that our parents are willing to work to get the money to pay for a state-of-the-art playground. I'd like to know as well if you will communicate with the association that's out there, because it's a very strong homeowners association, as we've dealt with other issues that we've had at the school. If the city's going to join with us, I think that would be wonderful, if they're going to take responsibility for upkeep, because then we won't have to worry about it as a budget item. And if we could have that information when we come back together so that we can vote on it, I think that would be a good idea.
I have a question. One of the speakers said that there were two inclusive playgrounds in Virginia Beach. I would like to know whether those, how those were set up. Were those set up by the city? Are they on city property? Are they on the school property? Were they, you know, how was that formed? And what could we learn from those two situations?
I think you had some comment.
Yeah, I would just, we have heard from some residents from Burbidge Grant this evening, I believe.
We have a homeowners association though that represents all.
Although I would like to see this on the agenda for our vote this evening, I will delay that request and when we have the additional information next month, I'd look forward to joining other board members in supporting the program with a yes vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As the superintendent was saying, I think if, if the superintendent, the city manager and the homeowners association and those, and other persons that have gotten together, if they would meet together and discuss it, maybe we could come up with something that the city manager is agreeing with and you and of course, the home, the persons out in the Burbidge Grant area. So, I think that would be probably the way we need to do it.
Sounds like you're describing, and, and I had this thought as well, maybe a memorandum of understanding between those parties that would be directly involved so that we have clear expectations and as far as following through so we're all on the same page.
And we normally get input from, when we do things like this, from the community. So, you know, if it's out there, if some other community persons want to comment or something, they could either, either email you or give you a call or whatever, to the association. I think that would.
Other comments from the, from the members of the board.
It's a great idea.
Towards the superintendent, what you expect the superintendent to do? Yes, Dr. DeBransky.
I'd like to commend all the people who came out here and spoke on behalf of the playground. It's a, makes me feel good to know that people are out there caring about what's going on in our community and I think it's a wonderful thing as well.
I think an all-inclusive playground is a wonderful idea. I would hope in speaking with the city manager that we would look at an appropriate site. This is a large complex that we're talking about and I want to know how it will affect the addition that we're planning at Northern Shores because of the proximity and so forth. Maybe in talking with the city manager, he may have some suggestions of other sites close by of land that is available as well, you know, for something like this. An inclusive playground is a wonderful idea and I'm like Ms. Bouchard, I would like to know how Virginia Beach set theirs up, if it's on school property or if it's a separate city entity. Yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, you have your direction?
Can I just make one other comment? The New Florence Bowser Elementary School does have an inclusive playground, so that makes three in the area.
Okay, so you have your direction.
Yes, it's just if I may make certain we're all on the same page, I've numbered them. A memorandum of understanding, a draft memorandum of understanding, perhaps with the city, perhaps with the, with the organization as well. Community input would be necessary to get opinions and input from them. What might maintaining and updating, look, updating look like as far as the responsibility? Speak with the homeowners association to get their input. Look again at the two sites in Virginia Beach as well and any other sites. I think that captures everything.
Could I just ask one more thing? Okay, the other concern that I think is of course liability. So, obviously, anything that happens on the school grounds, the school is going to be liable for. How is that going to be handled?
Certainly look into that. I don't know if the attorney wants to speak now or if we can conclude.
It's on school property and it's owned by the school and someone is injured on that equipment, of course, there's going to be some liability, potential liability to the schools as a result of that. So, so much of this is going to be driven by where it is and who owns it. And then, once those issues are determined, then the liability factor will kick in.
Now, let me say this, as I understood it, and folks are still here, the, if it were built on the school grounds, it would have to be turned over to the school system. Is that correct?
That's how we generally operate.
It would, if it were built on the school ground, then it would be gifted to us, right? So, then it would be, it would be covered under our insurance.
But, but there's one issue that, there's one issue that I don't understand still. If this is a large playground and if this would be only for kids that attend Northern Shore?
No, no, no.
But that's why I'm asking. I'm just asking because I think that also comes into play. In our playgrounds and our other schools, are they open to any child in the city?
After, after hours.
After hours, they're not supposed to be on them, but I have sense enough to know that kids are on them.
Right. I mean, I think that that's another thing that we would have to know also. I mean, what is the intention? Is the intention that it, this playground would be accessible all day, every day, all hours? And if so, how is it going to be supervised or?
I clearly would not recommend that we have non-students on grounds during the school day. I can tell you now, that wouldn't be a recommendation. I, I don't think the committee has, has suggested that during the conversations that I've had.
No, I just don't know. I just didn't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that it would be and, and am open to correction if I'm wrong. After school, when the children have gone, children do come and play on the, on the playground equipment. If we do something like talking to the, the city to make it a joint use kind of thing, if we do accept this gift, we make it a joint use kind of thing with the city, which would make the city then be responsible for oversight after the school hours if they were on and I'm sure at, at dusk or whenever the regular parks close, the regular playgrounds close, it would be closed as well.
And that's the type of information, having conversations with, with council as well as the city manager as far as what commitment they have that we'd be bringing back to you. The other piece that I didn't mention, that was mentioned here, is making certain that we align this with the renovation or the addition of Northern Shores.
Absolutely.
That's going to have to be very important that we have specific details with our architects if we get the CIP approved so that we can make sure, sure that it doesn't interfere with those, those 12 additional classrooms that we're proposing.
Yeah, it's my understanding as well that the footprint for this playground is the same as the current footprint that we have. So, it would be no larger than the playground that we actually have already. It wouldn't be any bigger than the one that we have. It looks bigger on, it looks bigger on paper, but I think it wouldn't be any bigger than the one that we have.
It would replace that one.
So, it would actually replace the one that we have. The space would be the same. And I'm sure that if we need more for classrooms, because we understand that's a priority, I'm sure everybody understands that, that then it would have to be adjusted to fit whatever space there is available for a playground because we need the classrooms as, as was stated. We need the space inside because it does not seem as a building in our area is coming to a halt every time I move around the neighborhood. It seems like they're building something else. So, that, that would of course be a major consideration. But I'm, I'm thinking with your idea of the MOU between the parties, we'd know then, before we vote, what the city is going to be responsible for or will accept as a responsibility and what we will be responsible for.
Samantha Nick, you seem to have something else to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, wouldn't it be prudent to have a representative of the inclusive play projects also involved in the discussions? I just didn't hear them in your list.
Okay, well, again, we thank those individuals who appeared before us this evening. Thank you very much. Next, we have the reports by the superintendent.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The good news report for tonight is actually just a report on the school opening. Of course, we did open school the Tuesday after Labor Day and we currently have approximately 14,276 students. Very pleased to say that both of the new schools opened up without any issues whatsoever. We're in the process of completing our punch list, but as I have visited all of our 19 general schools as well as our centers, our two centers, teaching and learning has taken place. So, we're very pleased to see the integration of technology has already taken place. Work has been displayed. It's as though we've been in full swing. I also want to commend many staff members and I always get in trouble when I start naming departments, but with the, with the hurricane that has come, there's some behind-the-scenes people that, that I think need to be recognized such as our maintenance crew, our food services, our custodians, the principals of those schools that serve as shelters, the principals who are on call as secondary shelters. I commend them for their work. We're very fortunate not to be hit here, but I commend them for the preparation, the preparations that we have actually done. And I also want to thank parents and students for their patience as well as staff members, their patience. When we make decisions to close schools, it's taken very seriously. It's a matter of looking at the, the weather report, looking at the predictions, meeting with the city staff as well as their emergency team several times before that decision is actually made. And always, the decision's going to be what we feel is in the best interest of our, of our students and staff. But basically, that's it as far as the superintendent's report. Back to you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. You don't have an introduction?
Yes, the next item is introduction of school administration office and school administrators. Dr. Suzanne Rice, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, will be introducing, I want to say half, but it's probably not quite half. It never works out that way. But traditionally, this time of the year, we'd like to introduce you, to you and the viewing audiences, our administrators at our various buildings. Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. Chairman Copeland, Vice Chairman Byram, I'm here and board members, I'm here to introduce our hardworking and dedicated building administrators in some of our schools. So, administrators, when I call your name, if you would please stand. From the College and Career Academy at Prudential, we have Ms. Connie Burgess, principal, and Mr. Shaka Miller, Assistant Principal. From Kings Fork High School, we have Dr. Ronald Lee, Principal, Ms. Alki Boone, Assistant Principal, Mr. Derek Bryant, Assistant Principal, Mr. Rashawn Ely, Dean of Students. And not with us here tonight is Ms. Amy Dale, Assistant Principal. At Lakeland High School, we have Principal Mr. Douglas Wagner and Assistant Principal, Dr. Erling Hunter. Unable to join us this evening were Ms. Brenda Ingram and Ms. Tina Paul, both Assistant Principals. At John F. Kennedy Middle School, we have Principal Mr. Brian Thrift, Assistant Principal, Mr. Daryl Medley, and Assistant Principal, Ms. Marie Bullock. At Booker T. Washington Elementary, Principal Ms. Chanel Woods and Assistant Principal, Ms. Burnett Brock. Elephants Fork Elementary, Principal Ms. Jessica Avery, Assistant Principal Cory Hamlin, and Dean of Students, Mr. Dennis Tyssinger. Florence Bowser Elementary, Principal Ms. Melody Griffin and Assistant Principal, Ms. Cheryl Riddick. Hillpoint Elementary, Principal Ms. Catherine Pichon and Assistant Principal, Ms. Taya Clark. Macbin Jr. Elementary, Principal Mr. Garrick Rhodes and Assistant Principal, Ms. Verylessi Nansman Parkway Elementary, Principal Jennifer Connor and Assistant Principal, Roberta Branch. Oakland Elementary, Principal Ms. Tamisha Dabney and Assistant Principal, Ms. Lisa Raff. And finally, this evening, from Pioneer Elementary, Principal Ms. Lori Mooney and Assistant Principal, Ms. Barbara Tid. Thank you, administrators, for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to the administrators. You can sneak out in a few minutes. I know you would love to stay, but I know you have work you want to do. The next item on the list is the Career and Technical Education CTE Advisory Council Annual Report. I'm going to call to the podium, Mr. Andre Skinner, our coordinator of CTE. Mr. Skinner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman Copeland, Vice Chairman Byram, school board members and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Whitney, my name is Andre Skinner, of course, coordinator for CTE and also adult education. I'll jump right into it. I want to make certain that we, when I'm giving this report, I want to make certain that I, make certain that I recognize all of my advisory council members. So, I wanted to kind of do just a brief synopsis of what's going on with our career advisory council. It was designed to correct, connect businesses with education in a proactive way and of course, match industry standards with our classroom instruction and our outcomes. The advisory council, of course, serves as an advisory in an advisory capacity by providing firsthand information concerning our current business trends, technological demands and realistic job requirements. Thus, our CTE advisory council has an opportunity to kind of give that instruction and it guidance, it's guidance-based for our students as we are giving that input from persons that have that practical and that occupational job knowledge and also the technical and interpersonal skills that are relied upon when they're, in their jobs. The council continues to bridge that gap between what students learn in the classroom and also with their real-life expectations outside in the world. And then, I'll just go ahead and begin. Who's running it? What are we doing and what are their functions? And I won't read all of them, but I think most importantly, the review of the annual CTE Division Plan. That's one of the main functions of the council as we're developing and I'm sharing that information. Of course, the recommendation of classroom equipment and instructional materials. One of the biggest things, of course, would be the suggestion of course content and program development. They also try to enhance our industry to classroom tasks and objectives. And they are the most important link with us between the school, the industry and the Who is actually involved in our advisory council membership? Centerra, and I won't read them all, Suffolk Public Schools, of course, Suffolk Fire and Rescue, the City of Suffolk Economic Developers, Hampton Road Sanitation District, Hilton Garden, of course, CCAP, Paul D. Camp and TCC and a host of others. Some of the events, our council puts together three student events each year and we're giving our students great experiences. The one that normally takes place in November is our Student Conference. And during our Student Conference, it was designed to give students the introduction to the Suffolk business community as well as enhance their knowledge of expectations in the workplace and provide them an opportunity to identify a career focus. And you're going to hear me talk about career focus, career pathways and clusters throughout and hopefully, our students and our teachers will, will attempt to use that exact language when we're discussing it with our students. The second event is a non-traditional extravaganza normally held during the February timeframe. This event is designed to give opportunity to our high school sophomores and juniors to meet and interact with professionals from non-traditional careers. The Labor of Statistics identified non-traditional careers as any gender that is comprising less than 25% of the employed opportunities within that particular occupation. So, it's great that we can get our students that experience of being able to get in front of people that are not normally seen on the forefront. And we're talking like health field, the males, possibly construction and auto services like your female positions are not viably seen. The third and, and of course not, the last is our Annual Career Expo. This is an opportunity for our seniors within our school division to actually have the chance to show their resumes, interview in front of HR representatives throughout our business in the Hampton Roads businesses. They also receive feedback which is given to the students as well as the teacher. And what this does, it, it does two things. It gives the students an opportunity to practice, interview, some of which have been hired throughout this process within our, within some of the businesses within Suffolk. Secondly, it gives me an opportunity as well as our CTE teachers, an opportunity to see what they need to focus on to increase the soft skills or the first 21 workplace readiness skills taught in all of our CTE classes. So, it gives both parties feedback in which we can improve on. Some of the business participants that have taken place in some of our events, you can see them on the screen, Charter, Centerra, Norfolk Naval Shipyard, VDOT, Turntime Insurance Agency, Hampton Roads, Star Motors, Duco's Mobile, TE Cook, Defense Logic, Virginia Ship Repair and Verizon. And it changes from year to year, but these are some of our participants that normally will show up, rain, sleet or snow. I'll move on to our actual industry credentialing data. This is the last five years of industry credentialing. I'm, I'm happy to say, when we created this slide... we created this slide, we were at 1992 credentials. That has risen as the official word came in, 2013. So we're about 17 less than last year, but different students and on the road to increasing as they are taking these industry credentials, which are still necessary for graduation requirements. So that's a great opportunity for students to graduate, but on top of that, a great opportunity to gain skills that will have them gainfully employed in our communities. If you had an opportunity to glimpse, and I'll go over this very briefly, don't want to take up much time, but if you glimpse the pamphlet, for our Career Expo, we had over 130 students, 50 representatives from 30 businesses, and they conducted over about 406 interviews. In the non-traditional extravaganza, 117 students, 32 representatives from 21 different businesses. And then we had our Annual Students Conference, that are all ninth graders, 141 ninth graders, eight presenters, and then an interactive business lunch and presentation. What I do want to make certain that we are paying close attention to is that career and technical education has to take its place as one of the forefronts in our business of education. I do want to also thank you for continuing to support the narrative so that we can try to rewrite the perceptions of CTE so that it is not viewed as a last resort, but as an optional pathway for gainful employment for our students, as our colleges with their different majors and minors that are available to students. So it's the same process, could be a little less expensive, but our students have option. And then last but not least, one of the most important things that I wanted to report out is our cooperative education process, in which our students are able to go out and find jobs and have coordinated check-ins by our staff. This school year, we had 37 students that were on internships throughout businesses within our city, to include Boys and Girls Clubs, Suffolk YMCA, the Bayport Student Rand Credit Union, Duke, Old Dominion's Modeling and Simulation, Vmasdowne and Harvey View, and then our own IT department. Throughout those 37 students, 26 employees, they put in over 16,000, close to 17,000 hours, and were awarded a total or over an amount of $134,840 that were earned by our students. So they are showcasing what they have learned in the classroom and have that opportunity to continue. So thank you for supporting CTE, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions, thank you, Mr. Skinner. The next item on the list is a Safety Monitors Update. Before Dr. Rice begins to present, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, just want to give you an update as to where we are with the entire safety monitor and just the safety plans in general. As you well know, you all, as a board, approved late during the summer additional funding that we received from the state, and you approved that that money would go towards hiring full-time safety monitors at each of our schools. And we did have some safety monitors at our high school, as well as resource officers, but we did not have that at the elementary school. We also had resource officers at the middle school. You also may be well aware that the question came up when I presented this to the board to ask for the money to be appropriated, to the City Council to be appropriated. The question came up, would we be willing to partner with the Sheriff's Department to allow Sheriff deputies to serve in this particular role? While that's not ruled out, we proceeded with the safety monitors as you all have approved. I did meet with Sheriff Harris, and he was able to give me a proposal with some estimated costs. I asked him additional questions, and he was able to provide a response to some of those questions as well. Perhaps the two items that were most concerning, as far as if we were to move in this direction, one, it would cost more to have the sheriff deputies, but I do recognize that when we're talking about school safety, that can't be the primary reason to not do something because of cost. But the other issue, it would take four months to train additional deputies, because he did state that he does not have the capacity to serve all of our elementary schools at this point, so he would have to hire anywhere from 11 to 15 additional deputies, taking four months. So we proceeded, quite naturally, with what you approved, as we would have in any case. Dr. Rice is going to share with you just where we are with our safety monitors and what we've done. I've met just about each of them. I think we're fully staffed with all the safety monitors now, and they're eager, and they're on task, which is always a good thing. Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. So the three things that I really want to go over with you again, because I know I've spoken to this group before about the safety monitors, are their role, what the training is comprised of, and then where their assignments are. So as far as the role's concerned, they are stationed at the front of each building, near the front door at the kiosk there, and they're, you know, going to open that door when we have the buzzer, they'll identify an individual, and then they'll allow them in. Once they enter, of course, they will be managing that visitor's log, they'll be checking IDs, and then they'll be issuing visitor passes. That way, we can ensure also that these folks will check out when they leave the building. About every hour or so, they will also get up and monitor the building and the grounds. In this process, they're going to be looking in restrooms, checking through the hallways, and then any other remote areas of the building. And when this is happening, they will have the secretary then go back to the role of unlocking the door for those who come in as a visitor, and they'll check the IDs at that point. They're also going to make sure that all doors are locked, so that in their traveling of the building, they'll check all the exterior doors as well as interior. So if there's an unused classroom or a vacant classroom, they'll make sure that that door is locked as well. They're going to assist the administration, of course, with being part of the safety team, and they will assist with all drills, and they'll have a role also with any kind of crisis situation. They will also report any school violations to an administrator versus handling it themselves. As far as the training is concerned, they are going to receive a one-day training in crisis prevention intervention. This will take place next week, and what this is going to do is help them with situations when students are in crisis. They've already attended back in August a two-day training that was conducted by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Center for School and Campus Safety, and this was comprised of three modules. And after each module, they had to pass an assessment and score at least an 80% or better in order to be certified, because all of them left with an actual certificate that's good for two years. Looking at those modules, this is just a broad overview of what those modules included. Module one was basically key responsibilities or their role, problem-solving strategies, and then how to respond to certain incidents. Module two looked at some key federal and state laws that deal with schools, weapons, due process, and FERPA. And then Module three looked at our contemporary student, such as at-risk signs and factors that you might see in students, student aggression, intervention strategies, gangs, harassment, bullying, and then rights and laws dealing with students with disabilities. Finally, we're looking at their assignments here. So again, due to that budget that we were able to receive, we have a full-time safety monitor in each of our elementary schools, except for Hillpoint. They opted to go for two part-time. They liked both of those candidates, so they put them in two part-time. Middle school's the same. We have one full-time safety monitor in each one of those. They also have an SRO, School Resource Officer. And then the high schools, as Dr. Whitney mentioned, they already had two part-time safety monitors, so this was allowing us to hire one full-time per school. And again, they also have a School Resource Officer. And we did not forget about CCAP and Turlington Woods. They also provided a full-time safety monitor. And that is your update. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am?
What does FERPA mean?
Family, I'm going to let our attorney, because I'll mess it up probably.
Yeah, the question I'd like to ask is about the budget, the funding for this. This is from the funding that we just got from the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any indication that this is going to continue in any kind of way? Because I know it was a one-time thing when we got it.
It was actually lottery funds, I believe, so obviously it's dependent on the lottery.
On whether people buy tickets to the lot.
Yeah, and whether we actually receive that money. And I say that, yes, I'll reiterate that.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry. No, I was just going to ask, are we going to uniform these?
That's a great question, and I should have said that. Yes, we are. As far as a uniform top, they will wear a polo shirt, a Suffolk Public Schools polo shirt that indicates security.
Okay, all right.
Long sleeve and short sleeve.
Okay.
Same question.
And as I said before, they truly are on task, as you would expect. No less, two of them, as I visited schools, asked me to sign in and state your business type of thing, which I was okay with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The last item on the superintendent's report is on page 29, Calendar of Special Events. As you can see, we have several events going on, several Awareness Months, National Bully Prevention Month, Disability Awareness Month, National Principals Appreciation Month, and so on. One of the items that I do want to point out is on September 30th, as you well know, but I'll reiterate for the viewing audience, we do have the dedication ceremonies at the Florence Bowser and the new Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School. Florence Bowser begins at 1:00 p.m., and Colonel Fred Cherry begins at 4:00. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next agenda, be the consent agenda. The board members look at the consent agenda, and if you like to pull anything out to accept it as presented, is now for you.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
If board members will please vote.
Thank you. Next, we have unfinished business. We have several ordinances. In fact, we have six. Would the board agree that we could take all six at one action? Okay, so that is what we will do. So we up for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Ordinance 18/1913 through 18/1918.
Second.
If board members will please vote.
On new business, we have several ordinances on first reading. Of course, no vote to be taken, except the Capital Improvement Plan, yes, 2020 through 2029, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir. As you know, this time of the year, we do compile a capital improvement plan for hopefully your approval and/or discussion. I'm going to call to the podium Mr. Terry Napier, our Director of Plant and Facilities, to share with you our plan. As you take a look at this plan, you'll see that, as we said, we revisit this each year, and it's not a matter of just bumping a year. Sometimes it's a matter of we see the need to address it and to make it a little sooner than we had anticipated, or that it was initially placed on this. I'll let Mr. Napier share with you, and then we'll open it up for any questions that you might have. Mr. Napier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, we go through this exercise with you every year. This year is no different. Just a reminder that the Capital Improvement Plan, even though it is written as though it were a 10-year document, it is actually funded on an annual basis.
Excuse me, this is on page 47, our copy. I know you can't see what's on the screen, but on page 47. Sorry, Ms. Napier.
So even though we call it a 10-year plan, it actually is not, but we do approach it as though it were. So what we're going to do is run through the items that we have placed on there for your consideration. They are in priority order. There are a few beginning at the beginning, and let's just start there now with Operations Facility Maintenance Replacement Phase One. That has already been funded by the City Council. The initial phase one has been funded at $4 million. That bid actually comes back next Tuesday, so at that time, we'll get an opportunity to see how far our $4 million will actually take us. Capital replacements, that includes HVAC, equipment, roof systems, stormwater, infrastructure, those kinds of things. Prior funding, $2.5 million, and then, as you can see across the board there, we continue to ask for $2.5 million in each year of this 10-year proposal. Hazardous materials management, that is asbestos-related issues, mold, those kinds of things, $75,000 last year, and then again, $75,000 in each of the 10 years through 2029. Priority number three, Northern Shores Elementary School, we are asking, and this has changed a little bit from last year's proposal, we are asking for a million dollars, and basically that's A&E, which is design, in the first year, 2019. Year number two, we are asking for $5.4 million additional dollars for a total of 6.4, basically 6.4, for 12 classroom addition. Any questions about the addition?
I do just have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Two of the classrooms, as I understand it, will be a part of doing something with some existing structures?
We will give up two classrooms to gain 12, so we're going to have a net gain of 10. We have to connect the addition at some point in the building, and to do that, we are going to have to have some area where we make that connection, and we're estimating that we're going to have to give up at this point possibly two classrooms to gain 12.
Mr. Napier, how many of the mobile units out back are currently in use?
I don't know what Ms. White is doing with those at this point.
There are, there are, oh, gosh. The majority of them are not for classroom use. I do know that, but I don't know exactly how many. I was getting confused with another school. I apologize.
Some of those came from Yates and some other places. We put them there, but they're not in use.
Right, and we put them there for projected growth, for classroom growth, but currently, she does have a plan for using them for labs, book rooms, and things of that nature. She has mentioned that. But not all of those that are there, the 13, are classrooms.
Four that are currently, that we moved there this year, they all came from Driver.
Over elementary.
Yes, and none of those at this point are in use. We haven't got them connected yet. The nine that were previously there, I know she's using those. As Dr. Whitney said, I'm not sure for what.
Napier, with the projected growth in that school zone, is, are we, is it going to be adequate, or should we be looking at a larger addition?
In my opinion, I don't know that a gain of 10 is going to be adequate. I know that that's, at this point, that's what we have funded, so we're going to do the best that we can do with those 10 classrooms. But you're talking about basically 14 mobile units. At this point, nine of them being used. You're going to give up two classrooms, you're going to have a net gain of 10. Given the growth that's going on there, I really can't guarantee you that those gained 10 classrooms will be adequate.
So technically, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask with regard, I wanted to finish asking my list. The other thing that I wanted to ask is, do we have the land to add classrooms, and how much land would we need to add more classrooms if there were funding?
In addition to the...
Any space for growth is what I'm asking with regard to the property.
We have adequate land to go higher than a 12-classroom addition, if that's your question.
Right.
We don't necessarily have room to go straight back out of that building towards the property line, but we could go straight back into the right. That site's about 26 acres, but the other consideration here, in addition to the playground that you've been talking about, the other consideration is also parking. So anything that we do to the building itself in terms of adding classrooms, I think we need to also consider renovations to the parking lot, because that's already an issue now.
Addition to other core facilities, such as the cafeteria, restrooms, and things of that nature. So having the space doesn't necessarily mean it may be in our best interest to just add additional classrooms if we're not doing something about the cafeteria or the additional restrooms, which may be something we have to address. The other thing, you know, I want to make sure that we're very transparent. When we talk about these additional classrooms, they're not necessarily for growth. They're to get students out of mobile units.
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying. So when we think in terms of growth, my question again is, do we have space? So when we think in terms of growth, my question again is, do we have space there? Or would be, would we have to look at separating students somehow? Separating neighborhoods or redistricting in that area in some way? Rate of growth that we're continuing.
Well, and I think the other consideration when you talk about that, remember what we did with the last rezoning to Creekside.
Right.
We took students out of Creekside, we rezoned them for Florence Bowser. And all that did for us at Creekside was bring us down to the capacity of Creekside.
The normal, to the capacity.
So anything else we do there, we're going to be back in the position that we were before we ever did the rezoning.
Uh-huh, okay.
So there's a lot of things to consider in all that.
Is, is the idea of adding these classrooms, is it a little bit premature? If there's the possibility, I mean, if we were to add these classrooms and then we're already at capacity, wouldn't that kind of be a waste of money because when you start a project, there are these startup costs, there are these plans and whatever, that it might be wiser to seriously think about what we really need?
I think, if you seriously look at that question, I think the ten classrooms that we're adding is probably as far as we can go at Northern Shores, given the capacity of the cafeterias, the core. Yeah, all the, all those core facilities inside of a school. I really don't think that they can handle much more than what we've already got there. Because by adding these ten classrooms, as Dr. Whitney said, we're just moving kids out of mobile units at this point, which is, you know, that's what we're trying to do and that's a great thing and we want to do this, but it's not going to take care of growth in the future.
Right.
You're actually talking about, what you're really saying then is that this, if this is all that we can do with this school, then the next step would have to be another new elementary school in that area. I mean, down the road. Because that would be your only other choice, right?
Well, I think at some point, you're going to reach a level of capacity where that's going to have to be a discussion, yes.
I don't know. I, I, I would think that moving children out of the mobile units is critical for me. I have several reasons for feeling that way, but I think if we can move them out of the mobile units, I don't, I see that, I understand your point with regard to we're going to have to do something else sooner or later, but I think for the present, we need to go ahead and finish that project and as quickly as we possibly can.
Standpoint, I, I think it's critical that we get rid of every mobile unit that we can get rid of.
And if this goes through, if this plant, capital plan goes through, we will not open this addition until what year?
Twenty-one, twenty-two. So it's not that far away, three years. Once we start the design phase through construction, it generally takes about three years. This is not the same as building an entire school, but given the situation that we face there, it's not going to go as quickly as most people think it would. We're going to have to work around a school that's occupied with school in session and this is done all the time and it can be done safely. It's just not going to move as quick as, as some might think.
I don't want to step ahead of you. I think you're going to talk about the Excel Academy next. So we're looking at that possibly in twenty-one, twenty-two. Would we be able to open it before that time?
The Excel Academy?
Mm-hmm, if we're funded.
Right now, we're asking in this plan? We're asking, well, we're asking for renovation money beginning in nineteen twenty.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we're asking for three million. Whether we?
Who'd occupy?
Whether we get that money or not, we would be in a position to begin phase one of that program. So my goal will be to bring to you to start the Excel Academy at Driver next year.
Okay.
Keep in mind, that school was open for students just last year. So nothing's changed there as far as being able to occupy that building.
That's not to suggest that it doesn't have some needs as, as.
Well, it's showing its age.
Right, yeah.
But it's done a good job. We don't owe that building a thing. Or it doesn't owe us. It's been a good building. Well, we skipped number four, the operations facility, that is phase two. We are moving that up from what we had previously. We are asking the city to fund at three-point-four or three-point-three million nineteen twenty and eight-point-five million in twenty twenty-one. This would be the second half of the Mount Zion project. We're pleased to have the money for the first phase, but we cannot fully occupy that facility until we have phase two as well.
Talk a little bit, Mr. Napier, about what phase two includes.
Phase two, phase one includes the front building, which is currently where the Mount Zion building stands now. That building is going to come down. We're going to put up a pre-engineered metal building and that is basically going to be office space and facility space for food services, print shop, textbooks, archived records. It will also have maintenance offices in there, but those offices cannot be occupied by us until we get phase two. Phase two will be the warehouse facility in the back, the shop space, all of the things that the maintenance department requires to do their work. And we can't move our offices from Freney Avenue to Mount Zion without moving everything else with us. It makes no sense. So we can't fully occupy and put that facility to use until we get phase two complete as well. So we're hoping we can do that sooner rather than later. The Excel Academy, number five, we talked about that briefly. Any other questions about that? Number six, the College and Career Academy at Pruden. This is basically renovation funds. We have moved that out to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
And the rationale behind that is because we wanted to move the Excel Academy up closer or wanted to do that sooner than C cap.
Number seven, John F. Kennedy Middle School replacement, beginning in twenty twenty, twenty-one. And over the course of the three years after that, a total of forty-five-point-five million for a new middle school, replacing John F. Kennedy. Number eight, Forest Glen Middle, also twenty twenty, twenty-one. And over the course of the next three years, forty-two-point-four million for that new building.
Mr. Napier, just one question about John F. Kennedy. When you're talking about rebuild, I mean, building a new John F. Kennedy, you're talking about purchasing new land, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All three, well, maybe not Forest Glen. Forest Glen's got a lot of land.
I meant.
Yeah, John F. Kennedy, definitely Yates. Yeah, Yates also, which is, and Yates is number nine.
Yates a new site?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see any way we could build a school at John Yates while John Yates is in session.
Oh, that's a good point.
So John Yates, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three, actually twenty twenty-four, a total of forty-five-point-five million for a middle school replacement there. Number ten, Kilby Shores Elementary, beginning in twenty twenty-three, thirty-point-seven million for a new elementary school out there. And then the downtown elementary school that we have talked about in the past, that is way out there in twenty twenty-five. We're projecting twenty-six-point-five million. I think that's low by the time we get there. But keep in mind, this is a plan that we have the ability to change at any point. The numbers that we put up here today, we tried to calculate what it's going to be five, six, eight, ten years from now. There's no way we can really do that accurately. So each year we go back and we try to adjust these numbers based on what we know at that point in time.
Superintendent, I like to say that we need the downtown elementary school before we need a lot of the other things that we've talked about here. It's, it's a school that is important to me that we haven't seen any new growth in the downtown area ever since I've been here on the board and before that time. In fact, there's no school that represents the downtown area successfully and I think we ought to build a school downtown to.
But, and, and you may recall, we did have this discussion the last time we brought this to you and that's why it was placed where it is, but more than willing to move it where the board feels is appropriate. What's your recommendation or suggestion?
I'd say move it up to, to, to the fifth spot.
I would, I'm sorry. What I was going to say is, I'm still not clear on who would attend the downtown school. If we're talking about replacing Booker T., give it a new facility to handle the students who go to Booker T., which is very, very old, or some of the other places that are very, very old and combining some schools, that's one thing. But if we're talking about building like a new model school to do something different, I'm afraid I don't, I wouldn't agree with moving it past these schools that are falling down around our ears now. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out who's supposed to attend that school. Maybe I don't understand.
I think his rationalization is if you build it, they will come. I don't think that's going to fly, though.
Well, my, my opinion is we are combining with another type of situation over there. Maybe a academic school for the gifted and talented on an elementary level.
So it wouldn't be a general populated school?
Be a general populated school for the students in that area and also another type of school that we could use for a gifted and talented situation.
So is the suggestion to move our students who are gifted and talented to one place instead of having them at their home schools?
Yes, that's correct.
What would, well.
But that's just a discussion that we have.
Question. When you look at Elephant's Fork and Booker T., what would be your ideal of when we're going to have to replace those schools? Do you have an idea? Because we could come together with one major school within the city lim, well, we're all in the city limits, but something would take care of both of those schools and.
Well, it depends on how you look at it. If you look at it by the age of the building, Elephant's Fork is seventy-nine, Booker T. was renovated in, I believe, ninety-six, ninety-seven.
But it was built in.
Yeah, but it was totally rebuilt when it was renovated.
Totally rebuilt.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing there that was there.
Except for the terrazzo floors.
Right.
But just that.
Which lasts forever.
And they're still standing well. But it was basically rebuilt.
Okay, okay. So it doesn't need rebuilding, in other words?
No, Booker T., Booker T. is a nice building. At this point, I don't think we would even entertain the idea of needing to replace Booker T.
I, I guess my concern again is, is restated then. We are talking about, and of course, I'm biased because in my area, we're talking about an overcrowded school with, say, a hundred-and-fifty percent. That's the number I heard tonight.
A hundred-and-fifteen.
A hundred-and-fifteen percent.
Well, that's, that's our, our calculation.
That's, that's your calculation. We're talking about the need for a new high school because Nansma River is at a hundred-and-four percent before. So before we talk about building a new school, I would really take issue with talking about a new school elsewhere where we don't have students to attend the school yet. We're just hoping that students will come. That's just my opinion, of course. It is indeed biased toward my community.
I, I think Dr. Dubrinsky is talking more about, let's say, for lack of a better word, the gentrification of downtown Suffolk. I mean, I think that, that the, you know how cities are, like Brooklyn, for example, Brooklyn, New York is now the place to live. I mean, I think that the cities are trying to reinvent themselves, so to speak.
I understand.
And I think that what he is talking about is a way of Suffolk's reinventing itself. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury as a school system of, of being out front with that. We have to kind of follow what the city council does as far as how they, the direction that the city council moves and the city moves, so to speak.
Yeah, well, I understand.
And I think that's what you're talking about.
I would think that the housing would have to be done differently. If you're looking for a different kind of thing and I'm, I'm not sure. I guess I'm not sure because of the layout of our particular city. Even if children were coming, children from my area would not benefit from a gifted school downtown because it would take too long to get there. They'd miss half the day riding across town. And I guess because I am an educator and I, I have a problem with skimming the top level of students off of other schools and putting them in one central location, even if you could get people to come. Because those students who are gifted, who already attend Booker T. and already attend Macben and already attend Elephant's Fork, need to stay at Elephant's Fork for whatever reason. That's just an opinion. That's not, anyway.
With the, with the district's gifted plan, it's a push-in program, not a pull-out.
So if you add all that up, we're talking about two-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars worth of capital improvements. And keep in mind, the only thing we're asking to be funded in the first year or two is down through item number five. Anything beyond that, and the city will call it this themselves, it's essentially a placeholder for planning purposes. So right now, in reality, we're, we're looking at, and actually, yeah, one through five at this point. So next year, we'll revisit this and really, we don't have to wait till next year to revisit this if we don't want to. We have the ability to go back and change this. You know, this is our plan. We only get to present it to the council once a year, but we can still go in and prepare. You know, if, if we don't like the way this turns out, we can go back and, and do something different and turn it in again next year. But as we said earlier, we get funded for one year of this and that's it, at a time.
Action item.
I move that we approve the capital improvement plan as presented.
Second.
If board members will please vote. Motion carried, six to one.
All right. Next, we have ordinances, one through eleven, no, two, two through eleven, which would be ten ordinances are, they are on first reading, so we will not be voting on them tonight. Questions? Okay. Public speakers, we have none. Business by board members. Okay, Dr. Dubrinsky, starting with you to my left.
I have the business right now.
Okay. And go to.
Well, we'd just like to welcome each of the staff members back and the fourteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-six students. We know that this is going to be one of the best years they've had yet because each year it improves in Suffolk Public School, so welcome back.
One thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank Dr. Harrison and her team that worked very hard on putting our teacher supply store together with the cooperation of the Suffolk Education Foundation. I had an opportunity to be over there the second day that it was open and the comments that teachers were making were amazing and I, you know, I think, you know, we were able to do something to boost the morale of our teachers. And it took a lot of work and I know Bonnie Mackey and, and our parent resource centers helped out an awful lot. But when I was there, you know, everybody from downtown, from the school administration offices was there helping out. And it was really nice to see so many people that had come together for such a productive project. And I'd like to congratulate Dr. Harrison and her team. That's all I'd like to say.
I just want to say as usual, a ditto to Mrs. Skeeter's comment. Thank you to all our staff and, and families. But I'd also like to add to our volunteers, our PTA volunteers, our other volunteers who come to work in our schools to help us with the small opening. So thank you very much. small opening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, board members. I was just conversing with our superintendent as to who we're going to make those days up. So maybe he would like to give us something.
Yes, and I should have mentioned that during the opening. You may recall, when you approved the calendar, we had nine additional days based on additional hours and minutes in, in our school calendar. That being said, nine of those days, three of the nine days will be used for the makeup time, and then we'll have six remaining. Not that we're going to need them, because it's not going to snow this year, but we'll have six remaining. So expanding the school day or extending the school day has paid off. I think it makes sense, and obviously, we don't have to move into any of the scheduled holidays or Saturdays or any of those things that we've done in years past.
Oh, very good, very good. Okay. Well, we, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and we thank the board members for their comments. Informational items, you have any information? Anybody would like to comment on that? If not, we have action on the closed meeting and personnel report, Mrs. Barham.
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second it.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next, we have the pupil personnel report, Mrs. Barham.
I move that we approve the pupil personnel report as presented.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
We'd like to thank all of you who have attended our board meeting this evening, and do have a pleasant day tomorrow. This meeting will adjourn.